Chair Salas, we're ready for you.
Call the regular meeting of the Selma Planning Commission to order at 6:00 PM on February 24th, 2025, Selma City Council, Chamber 1710 Tucker Street, Selma, California. Teleconference phone number, 301-715-8592. Webinar ID, 883-1804-9306. When on the phone, if you wish to address the commission during the public comment portion of the agenda, press star nine to raise your hand and we will select you from the meeting queue. Press star six to unmute or mute yourself. Flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Commissioner Corey?
Here.
Commissioner Franco?
Present.
Commissioner Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner Sandridge?
Here.
Commissioner Kessler? Chair Salas?
Here. Potential conflict of interest, any commissioner who has a potential conflict of interest may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing and voting on the matter. No, okay. Oral communications notice to the public, at this time, any member of the public may address the commission regarding any item over which the commission has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to the chairperson for review. Members of the public shall limit their remarks to three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to say anything during oral communication? Okay. First item is a consent counter. All items listed in the consent counter are considered routine. The complete consent counter will may be enacted by one motion by roll call vote. For purposes of discussion, any commission member may have an item removed from the consent counter and made part of the regular agenda. The commission can then approve the remainder of the consent counter. The item one on the consent counter is a consideration and necessary action on the minutes of the January 27th, 2025 meeting. Any comment or a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes. Second.
I'll second it.
Roll call. Commissioner Franco?
Yes.
Commissioner Corey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Sandridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Kessler? Chair Salas?
Yes.
Motion approved.
The next item is a public hearing. During the public hearing, I will first ask for staff's comments and reports on the item being discussed. After staff's presentation, I will then open the hearing to public testimony. I will then close the public hearing, at which time, no member of the public shall address the commission unless specifically asked by a member of the commission through the chair. The planning commission will then discuss the matter amongst themselves and take action on the item being considered. A public hearing, Zone Ordinance Text Amendment, to recommend approval to the city council to amend the multifamily section 11 dash 2.3 of the zoning ordinance of the Selma Municipal Code. The section amendment will add development standards for housing development projects located on identified priority housing sites under the city's housing element to address lower income regional needs allocation efforts. Addendum A is draft notice of exemption has been prepared concerning the proposed project in compliance with provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act. Staff's report?
Thank you, Chair Salas. As you know, the city officially adopted its 2023/2031 Housing Element on November 18th of last year. Following that approval, staff forwarded the adopted draft to HCD for certification review. In our conversations with HCD, we received one subsequent comment that they requested be added to the zoning ordinance pertaining to the vacant and underutilized sites. Inventory list that's identified in table, and that's actually an O, it's 1O dash 7 of the multi-jurisdictional housing element, it's not a zero, it's an O, that identifies certain provisions for how those properties would be developed in accordance with state law. Again, the housing element is a, I'm not gonna say weird, but it's an abnormal part of our general plan that we do not necessarily have 100% control over. It requires subsequent certification by the California Housing and Community Development Department, and without that certification, the general plan could be found to be out of compliance with state law. So this is a relatively minor addition, it'll be a note at the end of the use table in the residential zones. One item we did discuss with HCD was the possibility of amending the list if we had subsequent projects that were constructed and having those units allocated to other properties that would require state approval, but it can be done, and they were generally supportive of that if you had an approved project to move some of those units off other properties. So with that, staff's available for questions. If the commission recommends approval, this would be forwarded to the March 18th council meeting, because council meetings are now on Tuesdays.
This is a public hearing item, so at this time, we'll open the public hearing to comment from the public. Is anybody? Anyone online?
For all callers on the line, star nine to raise your virtual hand, star six to unmute yourself. I see no one, Chair Salas.
Okay, at this time, we will close the public hearing and refer the item back to the commission for discussion.
I see this as just a way of getting back in compliance with the state. It's mandated, we really kind of have to do it, right?
To the housekeeping issue, correct, Jerome?
Yeah.
Just a housekeeping issue to get us on the same page.
That is correct. As we stated, this is really in compliance with Government Code 65583.2 subsection I, which identifies specific minimums for how items identified for your arena, specifically on the inventory list need to be developed. So really, this is a note. We would have done it anyway, they just want it further clarified in the zoning ordinance.
And this only refers to apartments?
It only refers to properties that were identified in the vacant or underutilized site list in the housing element, which were generally zoned R4 or rezoned to R4 as part of the current housing element cycle.
So it doesn't have any impact on any of the housing developments that are?
No, and I think maybe to clarify, projects such as Amberwood is not an affordable housing project, so it would not affect that project. The properties we're talking about are, again, properties that were identified in the housing element site list. Again, this is a state mandated item. Where we can make accommodations for property owners, if there's a general preference, maybe they don't want to do affordable housing, if we can trade with other properties, as we've stated, we will try and facilitate that to the furthest extent allowable.
This just makes us compliant with HCD requirements.
Okay.
So as they're listed as affordable housing, can you explain the difference between section eight and affordable housing for people that don't understand the difference?
The city attorney will correct me if I'm incorrect in my summary, but basically, affordable housing, or sometimes referred to as workforce housing, is more of a planning and land use type of item and term, that is for compliance with the housing element. It usually has certain minimum standards in terms of density, in most jurisdictions, it's 20 units an acre. In addition, it has a specific timeframe to provide affordability, usually upwards of 30-plus years, maybe upwards of 50-plus years. In both cases, they do refer to the average median income household size, which is usually from the general average, it's a four-person household that they use, and then it's like 30% of median income, 50% median income, 70% median income for low, very low and extremely low housing categories. But for all intensive purposes, affordable housing usually refers to the development aspect of it and the mandate to provide a certain number of units. Section eight housing is more of a voucher program that is funded by the federal government that assures some landlords, you know, a constant stream of income because it's federally funded, right? There's certain mandates for inspection as part of section eight as well, but for all intensive purposes, it's more of a voucher rent program for private entities to, not to say capitalize on, but utilize for their project. In most cases, affordable housing projects of all types, as well as government-funded rental assistance programs, require periodic inspections of their property. So in some cases, these properties may be more maintained or better maintained because they have mandates to do so, because they otherwise lose their funding status if they don't. It's the issue of if you have a project that does not receive any subsidies, that then maybe they have to lower rents, and then they don't have any oversight, and that's when we may have more of a blight issue, or a, people call it a slumlord issue with lack of maintenance of the apartment complex, lack of background on tenants, what have you. So for all intensive purposes, I think affordable housing projects, especially those that may be run by an entity such as the Fresno Housing Authority, Self-Help Enterprises, or someplace like that, they have mandates and inspection requirements, and that, I think, keeps those properties in better working order in some cases than sometimes even market rate apartments.
How does that affect construction?
That's a very general question, how do you mean?
The type of construction, the, you know?
I don't know if it necessarily affects, I don't think it necessarily affects construction, it may draw it out depending on if the affordable housing project is capitalizing on income, like the tax credits, construction tax credits. They may have to wait a cycle for those credits to be issued, so if they miss the cycle, it may delay it a year, but I don't think it necessarily?
The quality of construction would be the same.
Every project is mandated to meet the California Building Code, and so there's a minimum standard everything has to be built to.
Okay.
I would say, if you're looking for something, I mean, and in addition, we have specific development standards that they have to comply with also. So regardless of whether it was an affordable project or a market rate project, they're going to have development standards of both type that they're going to have to meet. And so in some cases, if you have a density bonus instance where they're allowed to increase the density of the project based on the amount of affordability that they're offering, they may be able to waive some development requirements like setbacks or parking, or maybe have a little bit less landscaping, and that's a mandate of the state as well to have a density bonus program, which we do in our municipal code. So, but at the end of the day, they have to comply, from a quality standpoint, they have to comply with the California Building Code.
But we still have some control over aesthetics, correct?
Okay. The limited extent, again, you have the objective design standards that have been adopted, and there's certain mandates in state law for streamlined approval, non-discretionary approval for certain projects that meet certain standards. And so I would say, yes, in most instances, as long as our objective design standards are adopted, which they are, and if the project meets those standards, then they are approved in some cases ministerially. So the oversight for the planning commission would be to make sure those standards meet the quality that you would expect to some extent. For market rate housing, would obviously, if it would acquire a conditional use permit or a rezon or something, it would come to you guys, and you guys would have more of a discretionary approval at that point. But for some affordable housing projects, the objective design standards are, for all intensive purposes, what the city can mandate.
Okay, perfect.
Anything else? Make a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Roll call. Commissioner Franco?
Yes.
Commissioner Kessler? Commissioner Corey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Sandridge?
Yes.
Chair Salas?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Approved. Is there anything else that we needed to bring, that's the only item on the agenda?
It's the only action item. Staff has, I think, one item to discuss that we will likely be bringing back in some form for further discussion, whether it's a zoning text amendment that is similar to housing element things for compliance with state law. And again, the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong. The, some of the recent housing laws adopted by the state of California such as SB9 mandate that the city enforce certain development standards such as four-foot setbacks on side and rears for primary, what they term as primary, as well as accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. That would differ from our current code in the fact that we have a five-foot setback as well as a 10-foot setback in the rear for all structures. And so obviously, the state felt the need to change these development standards to encourage more housing development, and in some cases, even the front setback can be affected when the unit is of a certain size, if there's no other place to put it. So under SB9 now, you can build up to four units on a property if you invoke the SB9 requirements. It's kind of one of these things where like if you ask for it, you get it. If you don't ask for it, you get the current development standards applied against you, right? And so if you know about it, you actually get benefit of it. And so to some extent, you know, staff is currently enforcing it that way, but we're considering, you know, further discussion on the item, maybe starting with the city council, but we want to make you guys aware of it as well, since we were meeting with you guys, that from an equity standpoint, knowing about something and having the standard applied are two different things, right? And so if we just changed our standards to the SB9 standards, it would just be easier to enforce across the board. Obviously, that's a bigger discussion, and people can always choose, these are minimum standards. People can choose a larger standard, it's just whether or not people want to invoke the SB9 development standards or not. Again, all the standards that we have in the municipal code are the minimums. That's the minimum allowed. You could do more if you want to, it's just that sometimes people try to maximize what they're doing, right? And so because they try to maximize what they're doing, they don't like our standards sometimes, but at the end of the day, everything in our municipal code is the absolute minimum anybody has to do. You could do more, it's just a matter of does your project entail you doing more? And so for us, the SB9 requirements, you know, you could do two primary dwellings of at least 800 square feet, attached or detached, it could be a duplex, or it could be two detached homes, and then you could do two ADUs, or you could do an ADU and a JADU, but upwards of four units on a property without having to split it.
And this is an R1 lot?
This is a single-family zone.
Okay.
So currently, our zoning ordinance already allows a duplex and an ADU, right? And so we allow three, and so we would clean up our ordinance to resemble that you could do upwards of four, and include a lot of those cleanup items in SB9 to ensure compliance with SB9. It's not a huge change to our zoning ordinance, because I think you could do an ADU and an attached JADU now. So you could do four units theoretically on a property now, under the current structure. We just want to clarify it for the public to make sure that they understand what they're allowed to do, because we are getting requests, we have about three right now, where people are trying to do what is termed the SB9 unit, and so we've added a detail to our application asking if they are using SB9. But again, if you ask, you get it, if you don't, and you just assume it's something else, and you say no, then we're going to apply the current development standards. So for us, again, it's as much a disclosure and equity issue to ensure everybody's being treated with the same measuring stick.
So our current development standards include covered and/or enclosed parking, which under SB9 is eliminated, correct?
I think it's limited, I think it's limited, I think it's one space per, and I don't think it entails whether it needs to be covered or not. Obviously, most homes in California have garages. Past practice has been to require two-car garage, two enclosed parking spaces with single-family development. SB9 only requires one grade unit, yeah.
So the other ones could be converted to units, to housing units, correct?
The garages?
Yes.
Yes.
Go. Go.
So when something passes at the state level?
You know, and that makes sense in an urban area, but less than here.
Again, I think it's a matter of how you view this. Obviously, these are minimums. Every project's not going to be developed this way. A lot of people still prefer the traditional single-family lot, one home, garage, and as much backyard as possible, and I think that's the general preference. I don't think it's going to be every project comes in is going to be an SB9 project. It's just an option offered by the state to try and maximize and spur smaller unit construction for folks that's more affordable. Again, it's an affordability issue.
So if a homeowner wanted to go ahead and SB9 their lot, to use, you know, those terms, we as a planning commission would be mandated to approve it, correct?
I don't believe they even come, we don't, currently, we don't have a outline process for an SB9 lot split. We had discussed processing them similar to lot line adjustments, because it is strictly mandated that they have to have record corners and things like that if they were going to split the lot. Under the updates to SB9, they don't even have to split the lot to have four units.
Okay.
So there are certain cases where, again, as Commissioner Garcia said, you split the lot 60-40, I think is the minimum, but there's certain mandates, it has property corners, it has access to a roadway, there's no other utilities that need to be installed, et cetera. That's a very limited scope for those lot splits, but they should be fairly simplified in terms of application, because they are in exist, usually in existing surveyed or subdivided areas already where there's property corners. So most maps, for all intensive purposes, are record documents to identify what property is being divided and the size of property being sold, along with ensuring that they meet minimum lot standards, have proper roadway access and things like that. SB9 lots have already gone through a subdivision process, usually because they have recorded corners, and they already have roadway access and things like that. So by adding, you know, splitting the lot and allowing, because on an existing lot, if there's an existing home, there's certain provisions that we can enforce new setbacks to like a JADU that's being added to that existing structure, we still have to allow it at four feet. So an existing structure or existing home is usually much larger than the typical SB9 unit, which is going to be probably 800, 800 to 1200 square feet, right? So existing development, or where there's an existing home, and someone's like, I want to split my lot, there's going to be very few lots, I think, in town that you're going to be able to do that at a rate of 60-40, given the size and the existing size of the home, where they're located, and how they want to split them. Because if I were to split a single-family lot, and I have an 1,800 square foot home on it, on all likelihood, that home, standard single-family lot with street access, I probably won't be able to split it at a 40, because my home sits right in the middle and probably will be on the second lot. So it's going to be inherently hard, I think, for existing homes to split, you're going to see it mostly with the existing vacant.
So say you have an existing home on a lot that is destroyed by fire, and now you have an empty lot, that probably would fall under, okay?
That would have different provisions, because you don't have existing setbacks to comply with, and in addition, you won't have the hindrance of an existing structure limiting how you could split the lot.
Okay.
I have questions, but they don't pertain to this, please. Who serves on our policy advisory committee, and what's their job?
Which policy advisory committee, because there's many that we go to.
That has to do with our planning department, planning and engineering.
We don't, we don't have a planning advisory committee for the planning commission, or for the, for the community development department, that's all, for all intensive purposes, y'all are it.
Okay, so for engineering then, when, when people get an email saying the plans are being reviewed by our planning advisory policy, who is that?
I can't think of an instance of, no, that's never been language that we've used. We say that it's being reviewed by the community development department, or it's being reviewed by specific, yeah, plan checkers, or, you know, the city engineer, city planner, the language of an advisory committee or?
It's for the sewer trunk line.
Okay, so that's a different, that's the SKF, that's the SKF Policy Advisory Committee.
Okay.
So, and if that is the question, the city manager sits on the policy advisory committee, all three city managers sit on the policy advisory committee, they meet and make recommendations to the SKF board on various issues.
Okay, thank you. And can you give us an update for the Dinuba sewer trunk line? Because I thought it was supposed to break ground in August, but I haven't seen anything.
So as part of the SKF Sewer Master Plan update, SKF went through the arduous process of remodeling the sewer system. For Dinuba, the plans were based off of the old master plan and the assumptions in the old modeling. When we went back and reviewed the modeling data for everything along Dinuba, it actually necessitated smaller pipe. And so staff's in the process of going back and revising the plans accordingly, because it's going to be inherently cheaper to do smaller pipe based off of the modeling, which we feel is much more accurate than it was done previously, under prior city engineer as well, and getting an appropriate cost for that pipe, because we will have to go out for financing for that as well, which has not even begun. So at the end of the day, we're working through and waiting for the SKF master plan to be adopted, as well as revising those plans for plan check by SKF. Once those plans are approved, they would go out for a construction bid, so we get a construction estimate and cost for which we have to go out for bond financing, which needs to be approved by the city council for. So the delay in the Dinuba line has been as much a process of ensuring that we don't oversize the pipe and spend more taxpayer dollars than we need to, as well as ensuring that that cost is not also passed on to the developers that want to go up in that area. So rather than construct a pipe too big, get too much bond financing, and, because they won't allow us to revise the bond financing after we get it.
What's the difference between the two sizes that we're talking about?
It could be, it could be a matter of a million dollars between the two, in terms of the length of pipe and size, but based off prior construction estimates and current construction, I couldn't tell you that exact dollar amount.
No, I meant size-wise, are we talking from how many inches to how many inches?
It was like 27, the whole length of the pipe, and now it's, I think the widest section might be like 22 or 24, and it actually, as you go further east, gets smaller, and I think the smallest pipe size is like 18.
But wouldn't it be wise to leave it bigger so we don't have to dig up all of that in 30 years, like we're dealing with right now?
I don't think we're digging up any pipe per se, I mean, a lot of that?
No, I mean, to, but right now, to put new pipes, you're No, I mean, to put, right now, to put new pipes, you guys are going to have to.
And they modeled the extent of all the development, all the way out to Manning as part of the general plan. So, I mean, it's an extensive area that they modeled. And as part of the project, and in most engineering practices, they include, they don't plan it for 100% per se, they plan it for 75 in case there's variances in flows, maybe emergency things, and they don't plan it for 100% capacity from jump. So at the end of the day, the general plan as it sits was what was modeled all the way out to, like I said, Manning Avenue. And so that whole area is not developed. So they accommodated all the future development north of Dinuba as part of the estimated modeling for that project.
I'm just thinking, like, we're holding up all these builders and developers for the gas station, for these, all these new homes that want to go in there. And if we can expedite it, we'll make up that, whatever the extra cost of the pipe, simply by having new businesses and new homes in town and they pay their fair share instead of dragging it out for so long until they review for a smaller pipe in certain sections.
I mean, again, we're talking about taxpayer dollars to put in the pipe. We've offered it to developers, they can go out and put it in and we'll reimburse them for it, and nobody wants to do it. And so staff's position is we're being prudent with taxpayer dollars and reviewing the modeling to ensure, A, we're not building something that is just bigger and a use of taxpayer dollars in a fashion that could be done in a more cost-effective manner. And so at the end of the day, if someone were to ask us, why did you oversize the pipe? It's not needed because it's modeled for the growth now. As the general plan sits, staff can sit and clearly say, this was what was needed, this was what was bought and paid for, and this was a good stewardship of taxpayer resources at that time. I don't think any of us take for granted what we do in terms of the public trusting us with their money and how we use it and the decisions that are made with it. And so I would say to the developers, we offered them the opportunity to go put them in and be reimbursed for it, and they chose not to do it. And so when you have us.
I understand it because we forced them on prevailing wage.
Well, we have to do it at prevailing wage if we do it. And if it's a public works project, it has to be done at prevailing wage. So if we do it, it has to be done that way. At the end of the day, they were offered the opportunity to receive reimbursement, credit, do a development agreement, whatever it is they want to do if they want to put it in to not delay their project. They chose to go this route. And unfortunately, when government gets involved, sometimes it takes a little bit longer.
So for my client on Dinuba and McCall, how long before that sewer line goes in? Or is he affected by that?
I don't know which project that is.
Gas station project proposed on the northeast corner.
I mean, I don't have a timeline right now because I don't have an awarded bid, I don't have anything. I don't even have funding for it right now because it hasn't been approved by city council. So that's kind of where I am with it. I don't have a general timeline right now that I could give. I know from a staff standpoint, we're working through the plans. Once we get plan approval, we're going to put it out to bid. And then at that point, we'll go through the funding and it would run a similar track to the Amberwood Sewer Trunk Line project.
When does it go to city council? Like, what is holding it before it goes for approval by city council?
What part of it?
The whole thing?
I mean, we don't have a construction bid, we don't have anything, because we don't have approved plans, because they're being revised.
Okay, do you know how long SKF is going to take to keep, is it SKF is revising those plans?
I mean, staff is revising those plans and working with SKF to gain their approval. So it's the city's working on those plans at the moment, and then they go to SKF for review. So I can get a timeline and an update to the planning commission about that item. But there's, again, there's other features of that that are beyond staff's control.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
I have nothing, other than happy birthday to the chairman.
Thank you, thank you, okay, meeting adjourned.
Did we need to do one more public, whatever, comments? No?
No, okay.